Hi.
Over. Campus may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment. Um portion of the meeting, citizens after identifying themselves will proceed to make comments as briefly as and so. Basic forums are inspected at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order to link with personal privacy rights. Are abusive, obscene, and those are the reasons public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting. For stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the regions, to the land, by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So consent agenda, the approval of agenda and approval of minutes of the prior meeting. And the approval, they can all be one motion, I understand. So we can do the approval of the consent agenda. All together.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All right, Owen Baver.
Aye, aye.
Unboasted. Approval bills. I have a couple of questions, so you that land school device monitoring on page one, on little. My page one button, it's on November the second for forty eight hundred, what was that?
So that is to monitor the activity on the Chromebooks for the students. So I believe it was purchased last year for the first time and it used up for the last of our S R funds on that as well.
Then what about all these Chromebooks over here?
Those are.
They were from way back.
They are.
Okay.
The invoices unfortunately were going to Serena and so they finally traced their way back to me and so that is. That should be the last of them. So there's old invoices on those ones.
And they, I noticed the dates are old.
Yeah.
And they're already covered with S R money or are we fit to come up with this kind of money now?
Um, nope, that is picked up with the current budget.
So these were, these have to come out of the current budget?
Mm-hmm. So initially, I think what had happened is they had Serena's email still, when they were emailing the invoices, they had started with Mark when he was here. And then got kind of lost in translation when Kat took over. And so it just took a while for it to get caught up. But yeah, they should have been purchased with last year's budget, but because of the circumstance, they didn't.
They're not, so we got thirty four thousand dollars with Chromebooks that we have to pay for now.
Yep. So I think there was between the land school and then whatever's left of the S R, which is probably six or eight thousand. That can cover a part of that, but it was the last of the Chromebooks. There were some carts and I think the monitors are the total of the thirty four.
So these were purchased with what we thought was S R money, but.
Initially, it should have been, yes.
We over spent our S R money. On like.
Did you put them in the budget somewhere like three for back to that line? I don't really. They have not been, no. In there yet. Um, just with the budget amendment, you know, we're still trying to get that dialed in and then so that'll of course not lock to cover for those.
Right, so since we haven't got a set figure on that budget amendment, this thirty four thousand will be added to. To that money that essentially we're going to take out of our savings.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay. And we hadn't seen these before because they've gone to Serena.
So initially, so the purchases were approved back in January or February when Ryan Wilson was still here.
With S R money.
Yes, correct. Yep, and then when they were sending the invoices back in June, July, I wasn't getting them and so which is why now. I think they finally contacted Kat and was like, hey, where's our money? And realized that they were emailing them to Serena, which I didn't.
And Serena didn't bother that.
Well, she wouldn't know because she doesn't check her West Valley email. It was her school account, but it was, they just had the previous clerk listed on there.
Oh, okay.
So it was just a, I guess, a clarifier on.
Other, is there anything else in Serena's email that we should know about?
There shouldn't be as far as purchases. I mean, I, I was monitoring it for the first six, eight months, but I mean, a lot of it's junk and trying to monitor two emails and.
Yeah, and that should be all.
Yeah.
Oh.
It should be, yeah, because it's been a year now and so for the most part, everything should be updated, but it was just one of those that slipped through the cracks unfortunately and. And then like I said, the transition between Mark and Pat, it got lost in there too, so it's just. Yeah, just all of the. We already had the Chromebooks, it's not like they're on their way, right? No, they're here, we've already have, yeah.
There's some still unboxed.
Yes.
Because I know a lot of them are not being used.
I don't know, but I would imagine they've probably all been unboxed and distributed.
And all the stuff been loaded onto them, so.
Yeah, usually it's technology gets in those tech directors grabbing. I would say, I know there was a few of the, the big displays, there's a couple of those in there too, so.
So the amount of money that we, we have to add that forty eight hundred to the thirty four thousand, right? If that, that forty eight hundred, it's.
So that's just the monitoring of the devices. So that's just a notification. Yes, that was, that was paid with S R funds, the last of our S R fund, so next year we'll have to cover that on our own.
Okay, because at that point, you were getting the email, everything was.
Yeah, well, and this one was a new, this was a, it's an annual subscription, the land school is. The land school was anticipated, so what that is, is it's a, it's a monitoring software where if I'm the teacher, my classes are set up and. And I can look on my monitor and see what every single kid in my class is doing on their computer. And if they're doing something they shouldn't be, you know, then I can shut it down, I can send them a message. It kind of gives the teacher some remote access to student devices. And regardless of where they are, a lot of districts started doing that during remote learning because. Kids were at home and they couldn't just walk by and see, but um kids are also really quick at switching tabs or changing out windows and. They're, you know, I don't know, Googling the funny papers instead of doing their class assignments. So it's something that right now, because we had anticipated it and anticipated paying with S R, that was already covered. It's really that Chromebook situation that is the. Do we have, yeah, do we have enough built into that two fifty amount to cover that? I didn't. We could, it'll be close, I mean, we'll have to probably cut a few things, you know, within reason. Because the two fifty is for salaries, so. Wondered if we had enough to. Is it too late to change another amount? We have to start process over.
So actually, did you say that we could change that amount? Yeah.
I mean, we would, we would have to start over with bringing in a new proposal. So that would be the next board meeting. I think at this point, it would be better to, to continue the route that we're on and try to continue to be conservative and make additional cuts. And then if we have to do another resolution later on in the school year, then we can consider that at that time, but right now. I wouldn't want us to start over on a process that we, we may not need to.
Right, so this thirty four thousand that we're going to have to come up with is going to have to come out of funds that we've already stipulated for something else in that proposal.
Well, because on the proposal, we did a little higher than we anticipated by. We didn't, yes, in hopes that we would be able to put part of that back into the reserves. So, I mean, like she said, depending on between now and the end of school year, if we can make it work with what we have now, we're fine. If it gets to, you know, maybe March, April, and things are looking tight, then we would have to. Now, we have some Title One money, I, I forget off the top of my head how much, but it's not accounted for. That can be used to pay for some things that are currently in our budget. So as those things come through, there was a curriculum purchase last week. That part of it is standard curriculum, part of it is intervention curriculum, so the intervention portion is being paid for out of Title One. So as those items come through, we're kind of sorting them off one way or the other, whether it's general fund or title. Some of our building expenses, we're looking at, is this something we could use our building reserve fund for rather than the general budget? So we're, we're trying to just scrutinize all of these. Other budgets that we have to keep things out of the general fund because there is already so much there. So between all of those things, we're, we're still very tight. I have to stay very conservative, but that's why I don't want to scrap the resolution process right now. Because we may not, we may not need to, and I don't want to start over with our, we're almost done.
And we could, and, and we could, if we can ship, hopefully not, that we could. Do it again in the spring, we have to.
Yeah, we needed to make it.
Really, yeah.
Question.
So that we can do it twice in one year.
Correct.
Go for that money twice in one year. The proposal and then another one in the spring, we absolutely need it.
Is there anything else on this list of bills that is not like accounted for budget wise? Everything else is pretty standard, just all the supplies, you know, the. Food service. For the one.
I, so sitting on ten twenty six, there's a, a twenty seven hundred dollar entry here. I don't prep, I'm scared, I'm scheduled out.
Oh, so that's for our auditors, for denning and downing, so they're preparing our audit for us, so that is accounted for.
Sure, so this is an accounting thing.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, oh, I see.
I'm actually going to approve the bills for after. I'll second.
Is any discussion? I was bigger.
Aye, aye.
Unboasted. On it, looks like we don't have any requests to address the school board. If we have any correspondence that I know. So that part will go on to the West Valley Parent Teachers Organization report. Anybody here ready to speak for them? Nobody. Um, West Valley, or Best Valley Teachers Organization, this is what we get.
And it won't take long, but this is just a letter from the W B T A with our intent to negotiate. You know, in the beginning of twenty twenty three. And we'll just be in touch through Cindy probably about dates and get that ball rolling.
And this is just a gift, yearbook, middle school yearbook that's on the action item. And it is the first middle school yearbook.
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful. And Melanie has elementary.
Great, we are the West Valley second grade teaching team and it was our month to share. So we invited our school counselor and reporter. So today, we're going to talk about just briefly the warrior statutes with, with a program that I started last year. One of my favorite parts of the school counseling job is going into the classrooms and doing the S D L lessons. So this is kind of just an extension of that. And I wanted to be able to provide the teachers with something so I could kind of facilitate some different activities. Give it to the teachers to kind of pick and choose what kind of activities that they want to do. Just to kind of extend and supplement the S D L lessons that I do. So, something that I do every week for the teachers, um, first of all, I guess every month we have a different character trait or warrior statue. And the first formants were doing the warrior way, so last month was kindness, this month is respect. And each week has a specific focus, so self-respect, respecting others, that sort of thing. This is an example from last month when we did kindness. So every Friday, the teachers get an email with a handful of activities to do, different videos to go through. Usually includes some songs, things like that, that they can kind of pick and choose what they want to use in the classroom to go over that week's specific. Character trait and focus. So this was just kind of an example of what they get weekly and they can kind of use it however they want.
So we then take what Anna sends to us and we decide how we're going to use it in the classroom. And the state this year has been wonderful and has created slides that all of us use in our classrooms at the end of the day. Or throughout the day, honestly, we talk a lot about them at our morning meeting times and our closing meetings, but the end of the day. We incorporate into our writing, which they'll be sharing some of that, so I won't talk too much on that. It's a great way for community building within our classroom, we want our classrooms to be a safe place. And then we also, in kindness, we were doing some STEM challenges and team building, which if we had more time, we were going to make you guys do that. I know it's late.
Okay, so here is just some picture copies of different things that we have. So this picture right here is just an example of what Anna builds and then puts it in the hallway. And so all of these little hearts are kindness hearts and if teachers or even other students noticed someone else in the school. Being kind, they got to write the name of who the person was and what they noticed. And then it goes to Mrs. Porter and she put it on the wall and each color was for a different grade, but it's pretty. Pretty awesome to see that all grade levels were involved in the process at some point or another. And we tried counting them, but we thought that there was like over a hundred hearts on the wall. And then this is just an example of a kindness challenge that we sent home to get parents involved if they wanted to do it. And the kids got, there's like a little task on each one, and I had one too that I did in my class. And so we would do it as like a morning meeting, I would put a kindness challenge up there and then if they got it done, some point in the day, they would come share with me what they did. And we would talk about it and like the response from the other person that they had a kindness interaction with and they would cross off. So this one was done at home and they got to color each task that they completed at home, right? That's not my student, but. So, and then here's some kindness strips, this was one of Mrs. Porter's lessons. And I didn't make the strip because I wanted to, I knew we were going to present this, so I wanted to, you guys be able to see what they wrote. So they got to pick a prompt on where they wanted to think about how they could be kind. And this one up here was at home, I can be kind by being nice to my mom. And then your little heart, and then this one, I wrote the second part of it. But the student said that they could be kind to others on the school bus by not yelling and not, or in being respectful and not throwing trash on the floor. And then this one was at school, at school you can be kind by saying you look cool. And then at home, I can be kind by helping my, or the adult, they said helping adults cook. So those were just a few other examples. All right, and then one way that we try to incorporate the kindness, we do it across curriculum. And we do mini sentence journals, so I have a few friends that'll come up in a minute and share theirs. But in second grade, we try and make strong sentences, so instead of just writing, I like recess, we do because but so sentences. So I like recess because I get to go outside, I like recess, but sometimes it's wet. I like recess, so I wish we had it more often. We did that with kindness and we said kindness is important because, so Aria, Vienna, and Logan, as well as Catcher, would you guys come on up? We have some very brave second graders that agreed to come talk with, as we said, the boss people today. So Catcher's is one of the chains, and this is Catcher Wilson, that he did with Mrs. Johnson, so Catcher, do you want to read yours first? Go for it, buddy. By helping my little sister clean up. Awesome, and this is Vienna, and Vienna is doing the because but so sentences, so go ahead, Vienna, you can read yours.
Kindness is important, so we could do it to make the world a better place. Kindness is important because it helps people be relevant. Kindness is important, but people can struggle.
And Aria, go ahead and read yours.
Kindness is important because you can teach little kids about it. Kindness is important, so you should do it every day. Kindness is important, but it can be hard when you.
Awesome, and Logan.
Kindness is important because you won't be lonely, kindness is important. But it can be hard, kindness is important, so you can have fun.
So those were just some examples of how we tie what Anna does and sends to us into writing and strengthening our sentences, so let's give these guys.
Thank you.
Um, so my name is Katie Haas, I am a first year teacher here. And when you walk into a new school district or a new job, you are so scared. And it is so amazing to have these resources in my back pocket that when I'm floundering and trying to figure out. How do I teach these kids about all these giant, amazing concepts? Where do I begin, how do I, where are my feet, where's my table, I need, I need some help. So this wonderful team, as well as Anna, has supported me in making these slides and giving me a scaffolding that allows myself to teach my students about kindness. And I have seen in my classroom, my students be able to notice when they are kind with each other. And then I've also seen, one of my favorite compliments I've received is that because of that kindness, my students play together as a class on the playground. And then that kindness is not only with the student level, but coming in here as a new person afraid, just like the little kids on the first day of school. The staff has been overwhelmingly kind, so I am very appreciative to work here and I'm very appreciative to have this sort of support. Coming in and, and being able to ask for help and, and have kindness always, 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 no matter where I am, so that's my short little spiel.
I will, so we go round and round, these do kind of make your teachers nervous, but we wanted to highlight Anna and all her work because she is. A person in the building who really cares, so when you're looking at new curriculums or really expensive things. Please remember that people who work really hard to get our kids where they need to be. Thank you.
This is Blair. She's not, so how about we give our families a minute, those who don't want to stay for the, the less interesting portion. We appreciate y'all coming out tonight and understand that dinner is calling, so thank you again. And once we get everyone kind of resettled, we'll resume, we'll let Richard go first and then I'll do Tina's update for her time.
I'll wait for Tanya to come, she's.
Oh, yeah.
That we put together just some slides of data that we're seeing in math specifically because it was brought up at the last meeting, but it'd be kind of nice to see what's going on. Just start by explaining the N T S S process, which is multi-tiered systems of support, so it's taking a look at your entire school. And then breaking it down into layers so that you can focus on instructional needs of those kids. And so tier one is the universal aspect where every kid has access to everything, as we call all kids, get it. That will be effective for eighty to ninety percent of your students about, and it does vary. Tier two is what, where students are accessing small group instruction. Typically, that's effective and you have about five to fifteen percent of kids in there, sometimes it's a little higher. And then tier three is where that's not working and that's where the intensive intervention is happening. Where you have a lot more one-on-one, very, very small group, extremely targeted instruction. And then after that, you start looking at, you know, special education and sometimes learning disabilities are involved in that and things. So Tanya put together some pie charts for us to kind of visualize it. This is really cool, actually, in kindergarten math. Where we see zero red, which is pretty, it's unheard of, it's amazing, especially coming in. We have about eighty-three percent right now in tier one that are just accessing the curriculum. And about seventeen percent of kids who are just getting a little bit of help and math groups have been recently set up. Tanya and the paracrew have been amazing at getting math intervention groups here. Because it's not typical that we see that, a lot of times it's reading and then math is the thing we get to, you know, intervention wise, when we can or if we can. So that's, that's huge, did you want to say?
Yeah, just a little bit about kindergarten too, is we're really trying to give them a chance. They come in to us with all different levels of exposure. So it's, within the first couple of months, you're not going to be identifying them as special ed, you're going to be giving them more exposure and letting them really. Take in the curriculum and see where everyone is at, so to, like Mr. Gross said, we didn't have any come in from. The preschools or anything as identified as special ed, but then we don't jump on them right away, we put them in intervention groups if they struggle. We do have some lower ones that quite likely might move into special ed, but right now, we're just following them, meeting them where they're at and giving them as much.
So then, yeah, we just did it by grade level, kindergarten through fourth grade. And so our first grade math data is really, really good too, you have about eighty-five percent in tier one, tier two sitting about fourteen percent, and then just a few kids. First grade, you have about eighty-two, eighty-three first graders. Or excuse me, no, seventy-one, seventy-two first graders. So just a few kids in tier three. And this is kind of when the data gets a little different, is when we hit that second grade class. And second grade was the kindergarten class who was here when things were just a little odd. We didn't have a lot of intervention groups, kids were masked up, we had, you know, just a lot of weird stuff going on, we weren't eating in the lunchroom, we weren't going outside, it's like we used to, it was just odd. So, but we still have good data here where it's seventy-three percent in tier one and then a pretty big tier two, that's not usual. And so what we're thinking is maybe these kids are going to be identified soon, but there's just a lot that are kind of out, would you say, just kind of. Going through the process, the tiers, we're finally hitting the ground, you know, with our intervention groups and we feel comfortable with how that's going. And so maybe these kids will be identified, which is the design of N T S S too, is to get those, it's where they need to be.
No, I think too, just as you mentioned, the COVID factor being in masks those early years, and so we might see some of these just take longer in our interventions before we can. You know, have them in tier one, solely in tier one, so.
Yeah, or they didn't have as much access to preschools and daycare, things like that. Third grade is our year where kindergarten was shut down, and you can see the, the data, you know, there is pretty shocking in tier three. In fact, our, in third grade of our entire elementary special ed case load, more than half is in third grade alone. So it's pretty, pretty big, I guess, what you'd call group of kids that are getting, getting a lot of benefits. Not only supporting academics, but it's behavioral support too. Huge effect on our school that way in third grade. Huge effect on our school that way in third grade.
We have a lot of support with our teachers. Second and third grade, you notice that tier one is much lower, so we need more intervention groups. And so our teachers are wonderful. We have two second grade teachers teaching intervention groups. We have a third grade teacher teaching intervention groups. So in that way, we're able to meet the kids' needs even when we don't have as many parents as could be. So that's really nice.
Yeah. And you do kind of, just as a side note, see that a little bit after second grade because, and that's why you don't typically see a lot of gifted and talented assignment in K one, two. Because is it just exposure? Have the kids been exposed to everything? Are they in a family that gives them everything that they need constantly? You know, but then by third, fourth grade, it starts to catch up. And that's when you kind of see this level out a little bit. But fourth grade, here is pretty amazing mathematicians in fourth grade. So we've got ninety-three percent in tier one and then just a few percent in tier two, tier three, which I think is a testament to our teachers, bar none, and our parents, to get these kids. I mean, they were, you know, getting access to things and have been, you know, in the same boat as everyone else. But we've certainly been proud of the primary grades, getting these kids to where they needed to be, considering the challenges of these guys as first graders. You know, so.
Really shows the foundation, how our team works together. And we hit them early with interventions as many as possible and hope for this when we start getting them in the older grades.
It's just another visual bar graph way.
So did you track this last year with that second to third grade? Which is now in third grade, is there any improvement?
Yeah, yeah. But we just don't have that. Okay. But we could do, yeah, maybe look at that and doing like a same budgetary thing like compared to last year. Yeah. But, yeah.
It'd be interesting to see where the third grade was last year, like now, fourth grade.
Yeah.
Does it remember them last year?
Yeah. But I mean, what we do look at it too is compared to the rest of the country, or the rest of the state. And we're doing like amazing in that way. So we're really proud of that. And I think part of it is because, you know, we were here, you know, after COVID, we did open up. That was, but not a lot of places did. You know, they're seeing that effect, I think. And how important we are as teachers, right? I think that's what the data should show. How important it is. Those kids are here. Any other questions?
Why do you figure that, that third grade, I guess I'm interested in the behavior issues that they're, they're having? And pointing it back to not having a, what you say, a normal kindergarten. I guess, what is the, what are the specific behavioral things are we looking at with these kids that they missed out in kindergarten and haven't picked up on in two more years?
Yeah, I think the reasons are varied. I mean, I think a lot of it though is just social, you know, it's not necessarily caused by anything. And we do see that there are variations in classes. Some, some classes are, you know, called wilder than others. But I think with this crew, it's just a combination of everything coming together, you know, at that time. And so we've got a class that may have already been, you know, on that path to being kind of a tough group together. The dynamics of the class may be tougher. And then you have the shutdown, which is, you know, I, I think so. And this is probably, you know, I don't know if it's supported, but I think that what we're seeing is a lot of the parents of these kids were going through a lot at that time, too. Losing jobs, maybe, you know, just the chaos of that. And I, I think we don't think about that a lot. I mean, how much it affects the kids here every day, but, and not that it's their fault, you know, whatever. But I think that the family structure is something in COVID that isn't talked about a lot, you know? Because I know that being, I know kids at home, not being able to go to a park because they were shut down, right? And they're trying to work at home and they're bouncing around and there's stresses everywhere. Can't go see grandma, grandpa, right? All that stuff. And I think we're just, I don't know. I mean, I'm not qualified at all to, you know, say that. But I do think that it's something like the, the, I think that we see a lot and Anna appeared too, like one thing that, that they, just the amount of CPS calls we've had to do this year is unbelievable, unbelievable. I mean, I think we've had to do it just August and September more than probably my first four years combined.
What, what, what are you, the specific, these are what calls?
Oh, that's Child Protective Services calls. And so I mean, it's.
CPS.
Yeah, CPS. It's just, it's really hitting our school hard. We've got a lot of kids who are really struggling, you know? A lot of times it's families, you know, that are struggling too, you know? Kids, you know, are, they're there with their families too. But when they're here, you know, we can do our best to love them and keep them safe here and try to teach them a thing or two when they're here, but.
I think it would be neat to see this data over time to every grade and see if that little mater that happened kind of recovers because of the interventions that we're doing.
Right. Exactly.
I suspect it will.
Yeah.
All hits. Like if you take third grade, for instance, it all hit when they were at that key moment of like transition kindergarten, first year of learning sort of those math skills.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I have a third grader that fits right into those behind God dinner. So it'd be interesting to see it for math and reading.
It would, yeah, definitely. But we thought it'd be good to just kind of touch on, you know, one thing first rather than, you know, throwing it all out, but.
This new math program that we bought, that's.
What, what?
That's, that's helping with this then. I mean, if you find them.
Oh, I, I think, yes, I do feel like that'll, that'll take years, I think, to maybe find out. But, but I do feel like it's been just the way that we've designed instruction and the quality staff we have here too. I mean, our data looks really good compared to other schools, even locally.
And they're helping us where we need to. I mean, that was part of the deal was that we had support people with that math program. And are they actually doing that?
We have some training dates. So we actually, today we're talking about what dates we have left and where we need to plug in because now that we've done some of the.
And now we know what to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
So we will go to them.
Yes, we absolutely.
That's good.
And not just because we have to.
That was part of the, I think you have to deal with.
Right. It was. And I do feel like an advantage we have. I know that it's really easy for me to stand up here and say it, but I look at the staff that we have here and it's unreal. The, the quality people we have out here. So that is, yeah, it's a great advantage to start at, you know?
Sure.
Yeah, definitely lean on that.
I've heard from a couple of teachers that the new math program, it's a little bit easier to tailor for those kiddos that are needing some extra help and also those that are a little bit more, I don't know if you guys have noticed that or not, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say so. I feel like this one's a lot easier to like get into manipulatives when they need the extra support with like the hands-on materials. There's really like gaping spots where you can add it in. So, yeah. And there are the challenge packs too, that you can give kids if they are higher in that concept too. So.
And I think it has a lot more reading to it, which at first was a huge struggle. But I'm seeing now and I know talking to kindergarten teachers too, they're really thinking deeper. And like, it makes me think deeper too. And so they're going deeper than probably they have in the past. And, yeah.
Yeah, which will pay off.
Right, yeah. Right now, we're still trying to get through the prop, but.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, so Tina is not here tonight. She and a team. So Claudia Anderson, Turner, Bill, Molly Freeze and Tim Roush are actually at an MTSS conference down or over in Great Falls that is sponsored by OPI. So they are paying the expense for that. I felt like if they're going to pay for it, then we'll send people to go. So they are actually on the road right now for that. And it's a one-day conference and they'll be back Wednesday. So it's only impacting one school day. Before Tina left, she did prepare a chart with a very quick middle school snapshot. So what you see here is a growth percentile comparison for both math and reading. So the first column is early fall. So that's the beginning of the year benchmark that all of the students took. They've already done a second benchmark to kind of get an idea of how students are doing. And they're looking at growth improvements. So in math, fifth grade is already showing some positive gains as far as growth goes. Sixth grade has gone back a little bit. Seventh and eighth has stayed the same. Another point to mention about the math, and especially with the new curriculum, there is, it's, it's normal to have what's called an implementation dip. And what that is, is you have to account for the fact that the teachers have to learn how to actually teach the curriculum. So if we do see some backwards movement in math, that's not necessarily the fault of the students or the fault of the teachers or the curriculum. But it's just, it's, it's an unintended consequence of doing something new. And then in reading, there is positive growth across all grade levels. So to have growth represented really in both subject areas or to not see a lot of regression in that math because of the new curriculum is a positive thing this early in the year. And this is the, both of the principals and their teams are monitoring for growth. And that's kind of the question that y'all were asking about is being able to make those comparisons between where were these third grade students last year at this point? And that as we go through the course of the year, we'll have more data to be able to illustrate that. But this just gives you a quick middle school snapshot of how students are doing these first few months.
We're looking at our, basically our students are about fifty percent of them.
What you expect at the beginning of the year is a lower percentile because they don't. So a fifth grader doesn't know fifth grade yet. If a student, a fifth grader comes in and they're testing at a hundred percent, that means they know everything for fifth grade and we should probably put them in sixth grade. So to see these kind of lower percentiles at the beginning of the year is expected and normal because they're being assessed on the entirety of fifth grade really, or whatever the grade level is. And that's why we want to track it over the course of the year to make sure that they're growing. So what is important is, so we had maybe fifty percent as percentile, which means that's where they compare to other students around the country. And they're making improvements. So by the end of the year, we would project that most students are at grade level or better. So it doesn't look great at the beginning of the year and that's expected.
And, and across the country then? This is the fifty, everyone's in the fiftieth percentile.
In relation, so it, the, so percentile rate indicates percentage of other students nationally who obtain scores equal to or lower than the score of a particular student. So a student with a percentile rate of eighty-five percent performed as well are better than eighty-five percent of other students. So our students are performing, yes, in the middle of where other students.
Fifty percent of them are performing.
But that's normal nationally for students at, for their beginning of the year benchmark to score at the lower end.
And then what do we do this in, in, in a couple more times, three more times before the end of the year? So we kind of get a progression there.
Schoolwide, the standard is three times. We do a fall, a winter and a spring. That is really your minimum as far as benchmark assessment goes. And the middle school, they're doing some interims. So they're doing a few extra just because they want to have more current data so that they can be more actionable with it. But there's kind of a fine line. You don't want to spend all of your time assessing what this, and you're assessing all the time. But, but really, you know, five times a year, depending on the length of the assessment, isn't a bad practice. But three would be the minimum.
Three, okay, thank you. Because I, I guess I was just looking at early fall, late fall. When do we have a?
So then we'll have more early and late, but we don't, we'll just have maybe another one in the spring or maybe one in between. Well, there will definitely be one.
The benchmarks are September, January and May, but then we usually do a progress monitor.
Right. So those are the three big ones and that there's the additional kind of in between.
We've already done one additional one then.
Middle school has.
Yeah. I think some of the elementary, I know I like it as.
Alright, so. Yes. So I have just a handful of things. First is, I wanted to mention our enrollment. We are actually down six students from this point last month. That is two elementary students and four middle school students. I'm not sure why they've gone. But we are down a smidge in across the district. So our current enrollment is seven hundred fifty-seven. We were at seven sixty-three at a terrible time last month. Which leads into our discussion that we've been having around out of district enrollment. So I've been collecting feedback, feedback from the board, feedback from teachers. I've contacted MTSA and gotten some advice from Bill. And what I am going to work on over the next month to bring to the December meeting is a set of what I will recommend as procedures for how we will address out of district enrollment. I don't believe it would be a good practice to put these procedures into policy because then it's a little too stringent and we lose some of our flexibility in, in how we address out of district enrollment. But I'm looking at considerations from all sides that allow us to maintain our values and our culture, but also allow us to stand up at court should that ever become an issue, which MTSA's goal is to make sure that we don't ever go to court. So I have kind of an outline prepared, but I want to flush that out a little bit and I'll bring those procedures to our next meeting for the board to look at. And then you saw, I think it was, I didn't read the email, last week-ish, the email about concerns with the parking lot. So a parent did contact me and we spoke on the phone for a little while. So we all know that the parking lot is a challenge, especially at drop-off time. And in being just very honest, try to be transparent with her as well, we're very limited in the changes that we can make. The school physically grew and modified at a rate that necessarily wasn't anticipated. So where we're at physically, we're pretty limited in what we can do within reason. So the parking lots, traffic pattern, the population is just exceeded what our real estate here has to offer. We're also, so a question had been asked about modifying start and end times. Some of the, the two big challenges with that is, one, we report to the state the number of instructional minutes students have and we have to operate within those bounds. But we also have bounds time-wise that are set up by our contracts with our parents and with our teaching staff. So we can't just make the beginning of school longer because we don't have staff available to supervise that. We can't eat into our instructional time. We do have staff here because now we've eaten into our instructional time. So that even the timing of things is very fragile. We are in the office and in the classrooms, we try to be very considerate of if there's an accident or if there is a food delivery, which happened one morning at eight o'clock with a semi backed up to the front door. We try to be very sensitive to that there are things that happen outside of our control and we don't penalize the students for that. No one's going to tell a kid, oh, you're tardy because Cisco was unloading. So we do try to make those exceptions and people are very understanding. And doors do open at eight o'clock. We have students who are here well before eight. They are technically not supervised and could be considered a liability for the school district because their parents have dropped them off and they're not supervised. because their parents have dropped them off and they're not supervised. We don't provide supervision until eight o'clock. And it's like I said, if we were to go back and say, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna add time to parent schedules and we'll have parents here at seven forty-five. We'll have parents dropping off at seven thirty. So that, there is no, there's no win there. The times that have been staggered, so K three, their tardy bell or tardy time, everyone will look at it, is eight twenty. Four through eight is eight fifteen. So there is a little bit of leeway. Another solution that was suggested was dropping off in other locations. So going up the draw and dropping off on that side of the building and letting the kids just go directly to the playground. That increases the area that we have to supervise. And now we have to have staff here, staff in the back with the middle school and staff over there monitoring those areas. And now we've divided our supervision among multiple points on campus, which isn't very efficient either. We could look into, and I'm not totally disregarding this, but I, we need to have some conversations about changing traffic patterns. And if there is a way to change the actual road layout around the campus, that will be expensive to do. And before proposing that change, I really want to spend some time wanting to, to determine, are we really solving a problem or are we just moving a problem from here to there? And we don't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars to put in a new access road just to find out. It doesn't really help. It just makes things worse in another area. One of the suggestions was designating some of the rows of the parking up here as drop off parking only. I think that that is something that might be worth considering. It doesn't cost us anything. It would just mean that staff would be able to park in the first maybe two rows so that parents would have spaces to park. My biggest concern is student safety because I see parents will park a few rows back and they open the door and their kids jump out and then they take off across the parking lot and they're running between other vehicles. There's cars moving in the parking lot. There before the time changed, it was already dark. We're already getting back to that anyhow. So now we have, it's dark, it's icy, it's cold and we have small children running in between cars because the parents just don't want to deal with the lines. So they park, give them the tuck and roll and then go that they get there. We do have a lot of parents who park and walk their children all the, all the way to the front. And that we, by designating these two rows, we would at least give those parents a safer space to get out of their vehicles and walk their children up versus the, here, just get out and go, good luck. The biggest challenge with any car rider line is we are trying to impact and change adult behavior. If you are a teacher and you've ever organized the field trip, your students are great because teachers spend every day managing student behavior. There's going to be one, at least parent chaperone, who's going to be unmanageable. The parents are the most difficult part about a field trip because they're adults. I've been on numerous campuses as a teacher and as an administrator. I have never been on a school campus or know of a school campus that has a highly well-functioning car rider line. Part of this is the nature of, we are a school and we have these, these times of day where there is this massive influx of traffic and then otherwise there's none. Our busiest time is at the beginning of the day and the end of the day. And it's that way at pretty much every school, I'm sure across the country. Not that, saying we don't want to look at possible solutions because we do want our kids to be safe, but there is a very limited amount of control. Ultimately, whenever it comes to parking and dropping off, we are always going to have parents who are going to do what they want to do. And if what they want to do is to just pull up out here on the other side of the fence and drop their kid off and tell them to walk up through, they're, they're going to do that regardless of what we do here on campus. So tried to, to give to you as robust a view of the parking scenario as possible. And I don't have any solutions to promise, so we can look at isolating those two rows so that at least parents have somewhere to park. I wonder, do we need directional arrows? Because you have, it's a, only one vehicle can really fit comfortably. But we get people going in opposite directions and the, the columns out there. But there's nothing that really says other than where you enter that says, go this way. It's one way around. Once you get away from those arrows, never meant for themselves. So.
I have a couple of thoughts.
Okay.
Because I do this every morning and sometimes afternoon too. One, widening the exit lanes and being able to have two exits there at the same spot. So turning left, turning right. Just getting the flow out, that's definitely helped a lot because I think that's a lot of the backup is people trying to get out. And then on the way in, consider having middle school drop off, go to the left around dropping off alongside of the building south. And then if they have the two outs and they can merge back in wherever they need to, and then just the, the grades will come into the main drop off.
And the exit, so the way my childcare situation is, I get here like right at the worst time. And if there isn't anyone who will stop out there and let people out, there's no, there's no getting in because the cars that are trying to pull in have nowhere to go because the car's trying to get out, can't get out. I, I need to call the county and verify this. I've been told that we can't have someone directing traffic out there because then we take on liability if there's an accident. But just someone out there purposely stopping traffic so that people can exit would improve the flow of traffic.
What if you flip the two entrances? So then the out was the opposite, so people could actually go right and move on. Because I feel like right now they go right, but they're stuck because you got people trying to come in, you know?
Which it used to be like that.
It did, it used to be.
Changed it because there's such a short line coming in for drop off that everybody's.
So instead of having at least the space to.
Because then to people, let them in, is that we're saying the people coming from this way then can get in?
Well, if you come in the exit lane and pull right up alongside the building, there's such a short amount of space.
At least these cars are leaving and they're gone. But if they can't get out, then there's no room for the next row. And that's where people start to get impatient. As long as a car rider line moves, most people are pretty reasonable and they, they get, you know, there's a lot of kids getting dropped off. But it's when they feel like things aren't moving and things are just too stationary, then this out here turns into a two lane. And we get people on that, the right-hand side and they come through. I am not a proponent at all of a two-lane car rider line because I've worked those and the parents drag race each other because they are determined that I'm going to get out of here ahead of you.
If we can widen it and have two lanes and two cars moving at the same time, that would be really helpful.
As long as they're on the right side because if I'm on the left and I need to go right, well, now I'm holding up both sides trying to.
I always hug one, I mean, I don't know if everybody does, but I always hug one side so you can get another car.
Right.
By you.
And that's where.
And people are okay with that, the two lanes. Some aren't. I don't think they realize like you can go over to the left.
You can hug one side so that two can go out together.
And we'll start a series. I'm going to meet with Kat this week to look at our website analytics to discuss information that parents are accessing for community in general through our website. And one of the things that I want to put out are some guidelines and just remind people that it's not safe to let your first grader out in the back of the parking lot and let them walk by themselves in the dark. And even though it's not designated as two lanes, the exit can't be utilized to exit in both directions that you choose to. Just to put some tips out there, put it on the Facebook, send it out in an email, put it on the website. Because right now really our, our best solution is changing adult behavior and how the adults are utilizing drop offs.
Well, and I think also on the tips is, you know, if, if it's really a problem for you, then have your kid ride the bus.
The likelihood of that many parents going, you know what, I'm going to stop driving my kid to school after three years is pretty slim. We might get a few that way and I would agree. I've, I'm not here, but in other places had parents very upset about car rider lines and that was ultimately my impression is the bus lets them off right at the front door. And it's available to every student. So there are some options. The parent that I spoke to was concerned about the children feeling like they're in trouble for being late to school. I mean, I don't believe that our teachers are doing that. I mean, we're just, we're happy that kids are here. I know every student who comes through the front office, the lady's there, hey, we're so glad you're here. Welcome to school. For the kids who are a little bit tardy. If it's a chronic tardy thing, then that's a whole under, another issue. But that's not really what we're looking at with the drop off scenario. So it will, it'll continue to be something that we will have to look at and consider right now. Trying to get information out to parents in a way that's understandable and meaningful will be our next step. And then discussing kind of as.
Bus riding, cool.
It's very cool right now.
Another issue that we should, I mean, we should at some point, even notice a little kid saying, I'll be kind. I won't yell on the bus. This is, we're talking second graders here saying, I won't yell on the bus and I won't do things on the bus. That's saying that the kids on the bus yell at each other.
That sounded like it's from experience.
And I, I did report from my various grandkids from first up to seventh and they've got buses, not a pleasant place to be.
Well, when you think about, we're from that, most of our classrooms have a teacher who is giving this direct attention to maybe between fifteen and twenty kids. And then you look at a bus where you have one adult who's driving and avoiding the deer. Or elk. And there's thirty to forty kids on the bus and the best you can do is give them the eyes up in the mirror. So that bus is a very challenging environment. I know lots of places advocate to put parents on the bus to help with that situation. But again, is that an expense that right now we're able to take on? Maybe one day, but not, not right now.
Our, literally you can encourage carpooling too. There, for a while, there were some friends of ours and I was thought we're doing some random rotating carpooling that worked really good too.
I do think doing those first two rows, like trying for those parents that do walk their kids up, maybe be beneficial so they're not the back and having to walk.
Have to walk through. And, and that's something that I'll discuss with the principals and we'll discuss with our staff and if it's in the best interest of our students and our safety, then you know, it's something that we can. And there is, there is space out here. Parking along the elementary side, it's pretty crowded out there, but there is space out in the, the front lot that it wouldn't, we're not to the point now where we, if we were to designate those spaces, that there wouldn't be enough space for staff to park. Obviously, if we ran into that, then we'd have to reevaluate things, but there isn't, there is currently enough space for everyone that's out there. The last thing that I have on my list, and I included this in an email a couple of weeks ago, is the Northwest Mass, which is the Montana Association of School Superintendents, where there's our area, is organizing a legislative summit for the end of this month. And the purpose of this is to bring together the people who represent us in the government, together with leaders in our schools so that we have an opportunity to discuss things that are a concern. The association is working on some talking points so that we're not just walking in there blind and going, hey, we're not adequately funded. So that is just something that if you want to just kind of save the date on, it is November thirtieth at six o'clock at the Flathead Electric Cooperative. And then as we get more details, I'll give you guys an official invitation. But the invitees are newly elected or re-elected, currently serving legislatures, school board members, superintendents are in smaller districts, they're superintendent slash principals. So it is kind of, is still kind of a limited audience and it's not open. And then I do have our secure education consultants report on the safety assessment. And we will discuss that in our closed session and determine kind of what steps we want to go, we want to take from here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. It's an action I just looked forward to that. A quick discussion for the, for the out security agreement. First thing, consideration of Montana data privacy agreement, teachers curriculum institute.
So these are two that we didn't get in time for last month's meeting. The teacher's curriculum, the TCI is, I believe, middle school social foods, et cetera.
And then the next one is STEM. So these are just the privacy agreements that we discussed last month with the student information.
Can we put that in one action?
I'll make a motion to approve A and Bs. Privacy agreements.
Mary Kate Dover, middle school yearbook. She had one. And you will be the new little school yearbook person.
I did it last year, the first one. So this year, again with Melanie doing elementary and I would be like middle school. Oh, we have enough two-year books.
So you're willing to, to do it?
Yeah, yes.
And how about Melanie?
She is.
She okay to it? Alright. No, um, okay, I think I entertain that motion.
Well, I'll do a motion for C and D, consideration of Mary Kate Dover and Melanie.
Any discussion? I think that, I think that looks like a great yearbook to be in. I know the elementary one was just great. We got some good, good yearbook people on board again this year. So on favor.
Parents can send me pictures of the cool sports pictures, you know, besides the team.
Okay, and here's the consideration as a resolution to the budget amendment where we represented the budget amendment at the last meeting and, and by law, then at this meeting, we do the resolution for it. That's the, the agreement that we sent to the county in order to access what amount to our savings. Anybody care to make a motion to do that?
I'll make a resolution, or a motion for the resolution to the budget amendment.
Sorry. Okay, any discussion? Okay, any discussion? Alright, all in favor? Okay, consideration of out-of-district student attendance agreement. Two out-of-district agreements, West Valley students attending Columbia Falls School District.
And so these are just two agreements that we received for our students that are going to Columbia Falls.
So out of the five, there will be two that transfer to schools that we're down. Is that right?
So I think this is just getting called up on the paperwork.
Yes, students have been there.
Yeah, we just got it back from Columbia Falls, so these are separate.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-district student attendance agreements.
The executive session, SEC report, which is what we're going to do. Do we do, we're going to do that before the information items? When I come back for the information items.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn this session and open a new, right, executive session. I'll second.
Any, any expression? All that's in favor?
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, second grade teacher. Introducing your.